Good evening, everyone. We're going to call order the Thursday, March 11, 2021, meeting of the Clive City Council. Will the clerk please call her all?
Mayor Serxina.
Here.
Council members Klein.
Here.
Edwards.
Here.
McCoy.
Here.
Judkins.
One moment.
Oh. Weaver.
Councilwoman Judkins is in the meeting. Councilwoman, are you able to unmute yourself?
She says she can hear us, but her audio might not be working on her end.
Okay, and Councilmember Weaver is traveling for spring break, I believe, so good for him. Wish him safe travels. Again, welcome, everyone. This is the tradition for us at the time of our meeting where we have a Boy Scout or a scout state of pledge allegiance for us, and we have young John Monahan here to do that from Troop 208. John, are you with us?
Yeah, I'm here.
There, I see you. Okay, very good. Well, tell us just a couple of things about yourself quickly before you recite the pledge for us.
So a few things that I enjoy doing in my free time is swimming for my swim team and doing scout stuff. And I'm a star rank with Troop 208, working on my life.
Well, congratulations. It sounds like you've got a lot of great things going on. Well, I'm gonna have you recite the pledge for us, and remember that you'll be the only one with your microphone on, so we'll have good sound quality. So when you're ready, if you'd recite the pledge for us.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Scout Monahan, for being with us, and you can come say the pledge for us anytime. Hope you have a great week, young man.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay, the next item is approval of the agenda. I'm not aware of any changes.
Approved.
Moved by John, seconded by Eric. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Agenda is approved. Okay, this is time for citizen presentation. This is where anyone joining us on the meeting tonight that wishes to address an issue with the council, an issue that is not on the agenda, can do so now. And if you're here, please make yourself known to Pete the Cook, and he can plug you in for us.
Folks, the best way to do that, it looks like everybody tonight is participating with video conference. The best way to catch my attention is to use the hand raise function. If you click on the participant icon at the bottom of your screen, you'll have a separate window that opens up, and at the bottom of that, you will see a button that allows you to raise your hand. Mayor, at this time, I do not see any hands going up.
Okay, thank you, Pete. Seeing none, we'll move now to our scheduled presentations. It's always a pleasure to have our state legislators join us and come to us each year with a kind of a mid-session update. And we're pleased to have with us tonight State Senator Sarah Tron Gary and State Representative Kenan Judge. Just a note to council members, State Representative Conforest had a last-minute conflict, so we're gonna have her back at the next meeting. And so Senator Tron Gary, I understand that you've got an itinerary tonight as well. And so we're gonna have you speak first, and you know, I'll just kind of start with a question, and I'm just really interested to hear your impressions of your first session.
Well, I'm learning a lot from being in the legislature, and so I'm trying to share my learning with other folks. Because things are different because of COVID, we can't engage the same way, and I know you're experiencing that here with your city processes and offices. People can't be present in the same way, but there are a lot of ways to reach out to your legislator and engage. And I think one of the best innovations that we've made in this session, at least on the Senate side, is that our subcommittee meetings are by Zoom. So these are a really great opportunity for the public to join and share input. And because they're by Zoom, that means that anyone from anywhere in the state can join, and they don't have to drive all the way into the Capitol. And that's really made the meetings a lot more accessible for students, for folks with disabilities, with folks with busy lives. And I hope that that's a change that continues, because I think that's been just such a wonderful change. And so today, I was spending my day working on a new short video that I want to create just about how you can use the legislative website to see who are possible folks you should reach out to on issues that you're concerned about, because it's not just your own legislator that is available to you, who you can reach out to. There's chairs of committees, there's people in leadership on different parts of the process who would be great people to hear your concerns and your feedback about legislation. And so just trying to help people navigate that and understand that process, because it's not something that everyone's familiar with, and I know I'm learning a lot about it as a new legislator. We just came through the funnel, our first funnel, and so we narrowed what kind of legislation we are addressing right now. So some things are dead, but you know, nothing's really dead until the end of the legislative session. And some things are still moving forward. And so I'm putting in the chat a couple links to a couple articles from the Capitol Dispatch and the Des Moines Register that have a good listing of what's alive and what's dead. There's so much more beyond what they list, but they kind of hit some of the high points. And I also have my information there, too, for you all to reach out if you would like to visit with me about any topics that are of interest to you, and also follow me on social media, because I try to share about what's going on in my world. I am the ranking member on Natural Resources, so we deal with a lot of issues like hunting and fishing, not as much water quality as I'd like to see in that committee. And then we've had a couple bottle bills in the legislature on the Senate side, too, and there's been one bottle bill in Natural Resources that we've seen that's still alive right now. And then I'm on education and human resources, so those are areas that are really close to my heart. And those are the things I know the most about, but by the time something gets to the floor for the Senate, we all are trying to learn as much as we can about the legislation before we vote. So that's a long answer, Mayor, but thank you for the question.
Councilmembers, do you have questions for the Senator? Well, Senator-
I've got a quick question, Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
On the bottle bill, there's been a number of different proposals sent out, and as we look at this, there's obviously competing interests with both the recycling community and the grocers right there. Wouldn't it make sense to increase the cost of the return in addition to including sports drinks and a wide variety of tea and a wide variety of other cans and bottles that we see out there today?
Well, and I've also heard about adding, you know, just plain water bottles to that in addition. The proposals that I have seen have not raised that deposit fee for those items. The one proposal that we saw in Natural Resources was about allowing grocers that have a redemption center within 20 miles of them to stop receiving cans and bottles and stop accepting those. So I was concerned about that, because 20 miles each way is a long drive for a lot of folks, and that would make it probably, it would be a discouragement for a lot of folks, especially if you don't have curbside recycling in your community to go and redeem those. And then that provision, there was also a provision in there about the money that was not redeemed would just go into the general fund. And I'd want to make sure that if we have unredeemed deposits, that it really is put to work on issues that would benefit Iowans, to make sure that it's gonna go to support recycling programs in communities that may not have access to recycling, water quality issues, which I think is really important, and we could definitely use more financial support on that. And so I have heard folks share that idea about increasing the deposit, but I haven't seen any proposals along those lines.
Yeah, it seems to, there seems to be a lot of gaps there, and I think some even some misinformation in a lot of areas. So hopefully that's something you can continue to track and work on, because there needs to be a solution there. And so we're hopeful, I think, as a city, and clearly it's a priority of yours.
Well, and when, you know, if we are going to be seeing one of these bottle bills in a subcommittee, or if it's moving to a full committee, or if it's gonna come to debate on the floor, I'll try to share about that so that people can give their input, you know, before we do that. But I'm glad to receive input, and especially if the city has a particular perspective on how the bottle bill could be better, how that process could work better, I'm glad to hear it.
Do you have other areas that you'd like to share with the council, Senator, on areas of focus for you and priority for you?
So I'm really aware that in this time, you know, people can work from anywhere. And so in terms of thinking about talent recruitment and who lives in our community, who makes their home here, we have these tremendous options with working online with Zoom now that I think will continue for a lot of businesses. And so having the community be high-quality of life, great public education, great amenities, I think that really attracts folks to come and live in our community, no matter where they work or what company they work for. And we definitely want the businesses in our area to have people actually living in the community and working for them, too. And so, you know, just any kind of state, you know, initiatives, resources to support quality of life in communities is really important. And I think Clive has done a good job of creating a nice community, especially with the trail system and with public art, and really thinking about those amenities to make it a very livable community. I don't have any legislation that I'm tracking right now that really focuses on that, but it's something that I keep bringing up as we see proposals that might deal with talent recruitment and business opportunities, thinking about our economic development.
Okay, thank you, Council. Other questions or commentary for Senator Tron Gary while we have her tonight?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I may, this is Michael McCoy. I'd probably get in trouble if I didn't mention something back on the bottle bill issue. You know, the suburbs are all belong to a new initiative of about a $30 million new material recycling facility that's being built in Grimes. When you go down 141, you can see that massive building to the west of 141 by their other location, salt storage buildings, as well as the transfer station. It's gonna be the most high-tech, largest recycling facility in Iowa, and also in many of the surrounding states. So I just, I would encourage you and the other legislators to consider, when you're looking at the bottle bill, consider what it does to the material recovery facilities. We call them MRFs in short. But there are ramifications that directly impact those. And as Clive and others build this new facility that comes online in November, it'll be able to recycle new things that aren't being recycled today in central Iowa, as well as robotics and optical sorters and such. But as little tweaks in the bottle bill happen, it makes a direct effect on all of the recycling facilities in Iowa and can change that model from losing a half a million to losing 2.5 million very quickly. And so consideration to them and some support to them, if you're changing gears, needs to be considered, not just to the grocers or to the distributors, but also to the 21 cities in Polk County that have invested $30 million to build this new facility. Because you start putting water bottles in there as redemption, now takes those water bottles away from the recycling facility, and that was built into the revenue to recycle. And so again, there's a bigger picture, and we do have lobbyists working on that. We haven't taken a side, right? The bottle bill is a good thing. And the fight is between the grocers and the distributors, but there are many other players in between that it will impact. So just to keep that under consideration. And again, the cities, the suburbs have a lobbyist down there with Cornerstone for the Metro Waste Authority, and just hear them out a little bit about how that affects not just us here at Metro Waste Authority that belong to Metro Waste Authority, but also the other, you know, like systems in Scott County and places. They could put those, you could put a normal recycling facility out of business very quickly by changing the bottle bill too much without, you know, enough time to react.
Thank you. That's really helpful. Yeah, I think that, you know, when we, when we're making changes to Iowa code, it's really important to have all of those stakeholders at the table and to really spend time listening to their concerns and the impacts that the legislation will have, because we might have an intent for a law, but we've got to look at what the actual impact is gonna be, and that means spending some time working that out. If you have a specific contact, I would love to be able to tour that facility. I put my email in the chat. Send me an email. I know the Cornerstone folks, too. I can reach out to them as well. But, you know, I think I'd like to learn more about that new recycling facility.
Sure. Matt McQuillan can work with you, or John Edwards, who's the board member for Metro Waste Authority, and we can get that set up.
That would be great. Thank you so much.
I'm gonna ask Representative Judge to come into this conversation, because this is really important. And Kenan, I'd like to give kind of your thoughts on the bottle bill and this direction while we're having this kind of collective conversation.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. It's good to see everybody. Yeah, the bottle bill is a topic, matter of fact, I just was talking to some folks about it today where we're sitting. It's a touchy one, and one that I think, I spent my whole career in business. So if you really think about it, we're not moving fast enough at the government level, in my opinion, to keep up with what needs to happen with business. And when it comes to this topic, at least, there is a battle between, I don't know if you'd call it a battle, that's where the sticking point is right now, is who's gonna pay for the extra penny for the recycling centers? And I think we're going about it with the wrong approach. I have spent my entire career, 38-year career with Hy-Vee, so I do have some experience in the retail side of it. But it's really boiling down to money when it comes to this law right now. Who's gonna pay the extra penny to have it recycled? And right now, the unredeemed nickels are going back to the distributor, because let's face it, the bottle bill is really, it's over the last years, it's gone down in recycling. I mean, people are throwing their cans and bottles at alarming rates in their trash, hopefully in a recycling container. But the bottle bill does need to be revamped and brought into this 21st century that we live in. If you think about taking your cans and bottles, and I'm not just saying this as a grocer, I'm really not. I'm looking at this holistically. Taking your cans and bottles back to a grocery store is, you know, that's yesterday's news, in my opinion, where we're hauling garbage back to a store. To me, the answer is exactly what the counties in Iowa have done. And you mentioned Scott, and you mentioned Metro Waste Authority, and I was really glad to hear that, because I think the end answer, in my viewpoint, is curbside recycling. And we need to get to that. And I was just having a conversation with somebody today, it's how are we gonna get that done? And I don't know that we can get that, I don't think we can get that done this year, so don't get me wrong. Right now, I think there was five bottle bills being discussed, and they're all over the board. And to me, the recycling is the way to go, and I was really glad to see, I believe it was Mike mentioned Davenport, and then, of course, the new facility here, and robotics. That's the key to recycling. I think people would be alarmed to know how many times they put their things in the recycling bins across Iowa that doesn't get recycled, gets thrown in the garbage trash with China, you know, is quit taking all of our garbage. So I feel that that's where we have to head, is at the curb. And if we do go this path of upping the penny and go into recycling centers here in Iowa, I mean, that's a fix, that's something that can happen. But, you know, you've got two sides of it. One is a, the money side, okay? The other side, the political side, and there's always a political side of it. The bottle bill is extremely popular in the state of Iowa. And so then you have to mesh those two together to come in with a good bill. I do think it's gonna be one that's gonna have to be bipartisan and to get that done. I am, if we don't get anything done over the, this year, I am gonna work on it over the course of the summer and see if I can, you know, it is hard to be in a stalemate down there, not getting anything done when, quite frankly, the state of Iowa needs something done with recycling, and in a way. So thank you for bringing me in, and I'd accept any questions they'd have for me. I'm glad to answer them when it's my turn to speak.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Representative Judge. Back to Senator Tron Gary. Sarah, anything else you'd like to share with the council?
I need to hop off, because I'm gonna go visit with a group of Episcopalians now for their advocacy day. But I really appreciate you giving this opportunity. I think that the city of Clive is one of the most proactive in reaching out to their legislators, and I think that's just such a great practice. You really work hard on building that relationship and keeping that line of communication open. And so don't hesitate to reach out. I look forward to learning more about the recycling center. And I do have a weekly newsletter that I send out, so if someone were to just send me an email to my email, I'm glad to add you to that list. I usually go out over the weekend and try to give a rundown on some of the things that are on my radar. And now, you know, we're working on everything that came through the funnel to see what continues through the next funnel. So thank you all so much, and I appreciate your time tonight.
Thanks, Senator. Good luck with the rest of your session, and we'll see you next time. So Representative Judge, I think you know everybody here for sure, and good to have you with us. And I'm, as always, interested in your thoughts on the progress of the session and your priorities.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and council members. I appreciate you allowing us the time to come and speak. And I'm not gonna give you a real rundown of my history, but I will briefly say that my wife Kathy and I have been married 38 years. We've had four daughters. Most of our time, we've lived in Waukees now the last five years, but 17 years prior to that, we were residents of Clive and really enjoyed living there and appreciate the community. My business background was with Hy-Vee, 38 years. I worked there, retired five years ago, and took some time off and relaxed and then got into this. So if anybody on this call has any help for me to say, okay, you worked 38 years, you had a good career, raised a family, and you're not in a warmer climate in January, February, March, and April, and maybe give me a little counseling why you would get into politics, but I'm glad I did. I think it gives me purpose, and I think that we need folks that run for these offices, no different than the council or the mayor, that are in there to make a difference and try to make Iowa a better place. You know, I feel an obligation to give back, and that's why I decided to run. The areas that are important to me are public education, and I can expand on these if you want me to. And the reason I lead off with that is because I think that's our future and our growth engine for the future, economic growth engine. And it's also a great equalizer. As a kid that grew up in a poor area in the state, you know, I value public education, and everybody has a shot, along with my four daughters' education, Navy SEALs. So that's very important and one that I spend time on. I think healthcare is another area that we all need to work on and make sure that we make our systems better. I mean, I'm gonna applaud the city of Waukees, and I don't think, credit for your, the mental health facility that opened in Clive. Tribute to you and your city, we need more of those and more access to mental health. And I was glad to see that happen, and I think that, well, I think Clive, frankly, is the first thing I thought of, other than raising my family there, but that stepping up in a state and making a mental health, a world-class mental health facility. Also, the economy is very important to me, because I'm one that feels that we have to grow this economy at a rate, at a clip, much larger, and we gotta think further down the road in what's our economic growth gonna be. Because I, going back to my business background, if you don't have a increase in revenue, then how do you expect to, A, ever lower taxes, and B, to afford the programs that you have? I mean, 75% of our budget is in public education and Medicaid. You know, those costs are going up quicker than inflation. So we have to turn our eyes to that. And one area in the economic growth sector, I think that sometimes we don't give enough credit to, and I will tell you we are this year, is housing. You know, a survey I've read that 25% of Iowans are, you know, pay over 30% of their wages or salaries in housing. 40% of people that live in apartments are using more a third of their wages to pay for their rents. I think that it may not sound that important to people, maybe that own a home and have the money to spend, and they have the income, but you start getting over 30% of your wages or salary, things tighten up. And I think we've seen that in this pandemic with people being laid off, and it doesn't take long for somebody to get behind the eight ball apartments. You know, you have to have a pretty good job to afford a $1,200 a month apartment. So I think that that's an area we have to address in the, not only in the suburban districts and the metro districts, but the rural districts as well. I mean, if you think of some of these smaller towns that want to grow their economy, honestly, they don't have the housing stock to do it. They really don't. So I was real pleased to see the governor come out with a bill that I wholeheartedly support in spending for tax credits for building worker housing, affordable housing, apartments that- worker housing, affordable housing, apartments that I'd like to see us get over the finish line. It's passed in a committee that I serve on on economic growth overwhelmingly, quite frankly, and it's sit in, it's sitting in ways and means now. So obviously, it has a lot of hurdles to go through and there will be changes to it. But I was real pleased to see that because I look at that as a start. And if you do this enough years, you're going to make sure that you that you're able to afford and to grow this economy the way it is. And and so I'm, I was pleased to see that. I think another area is that's going to be very important and important for the city of Clive to keep an eye on is numbers yet. I haven't, but that will facilitate, those numbers will facilitate a lot of maps being drawn, different for legislative districts. And to give you an example, the district that I serve is Clive is about a third of the votes, West Des Moines is about a third of the votes, and Waukees is about a third of the votes. It's probably close to you know, a district and a half right now. So these metro areas are growing and you know, we're talking about the western suburbs here in the metro, but you take a look at Iowa City, Cedar Rapids, Quad Cities, Davenport, Bettendorf. I mean, you're going to see the maps really change. And I think that's going to be you know, that's a big impact on how we earn in and who's going to, I think that's something that we're right now, we're hearing that we won't even get the census numbers till first of September, mid-September. And you know, by the constitution, Iowa constitution, the maps are supposed to be drawn by September 15. So there's all kinds of talk of how are we going to get this done? How's it going to work? So that's another area that's on the the radar. And then one I'll just mention, if you if I have another 30 seconds here, Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, one I'll just mention that it is. What's that?
Because we want to get some questions in as well.
Sure, I'll just be very brief is one is in a dovetails back into this housing is our mobile home community. And we have a a big disparity in in what we're seeing. It's another form of affordable housing. But we've had, and it's happened right, our Waukees was our first one where we've had a venture capitalists come in and buy our mobile home park. And we've seen nothing but rents double, fees increased tremendously. And the laws are written in a way in the state that really slants towards the people that own these parks. And since I think I've even updated the council, there's been 29 of these or 30 bought over the course of the last year. So it is, it is very interesting that, you know, we we take people that own their own homes and then double their rents that they can't they can't afford. You know, it's leading to a lot of angst to hear in Waukees and our community, but across the state. And those are, that's a, that's, those are laws I'm working on all the time to try to get so they're on balance is the word I want to use.
Well, definitely. And thank you. You've got a lot in front of you. And and those are just the areas that that you want to focus on. I know you get a lot put to you, but I'm going to just at this point, open it up for questions, council staff, management team, any questions for for Representative Judge?
Your Honor, I have one.
Yeah, go ahead, Matt.
Representative Judge, I know you sit on the Commerce Committee on the House, correct, right?
Yes, yes.
So one thing that the Iowa League of Cities made us aware of today is some concerns with House File 555. It is related to natural gas. It's basically a preemption of natural gas regulations by a city or a county in terms of the distribution systems. And obviously, that as a city, that gives us quite a bit of pause to see preemption. I know in a lot of conversations we've had, cities just have a general concern with preemption and and what does home rule really mean at the legislature some years? And this just gives us a lot of concern, what it means for our franchise agreements that we have with Mid-American Energy related to gas. Does it supersede that? We also utilize a franchise fee to create revenue that we reinvest in our street infrastructure. Our street rehab program is funded by that. And if we didn't have the ability to do that on gas, that could very well eat into those revenues. But I think the the bigger concern that I have is just the preemption of regulation with these systems and development. And so I know that that is going to be, I believe that's been introduced. And you're, I think it's on Commerce on both sides of the House and the Senate. And so I just wanted to, I don't know if you're familiar with that bill. I know it's, it's been in a couple of different versions, but it's just strictly really an attack on home rule. And just gives me, gives all of us, I think, a lot of concern right now. And I know that's one that's potentially moving in the legislature.
Thank you, Matt. I'll, I'll, yes, I am familiar with it. We have actually voted that in Commerce, it's been voted out in Commerce. So that bill is alive in the, and what it does is it says that a city of Clive or Waukees or West Des Moines can't build a subdivision and not get gas to it. And if you want to go all, you can still do other forms of energy. You just can't they, that by the state law, you can't say that it isn't going to have gas to the to the properties. To me, that bit doesn't make a lot of sense for us to put that kind of restriction on 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 natural gas. I mean, 85% of the the our heating source is natural gas in this state. And to me, it isn't, it doesn't tie anybody's hands that they can't use alternative forms of energy. But it it ties the hands that you can't say that if you want that energy coming in, that that you can't stop that. You can't, you have to allow natural gas to come to the to the area. You can't block it off. So I was in favor that I I voted with the gas law, gas companies on that, because I just think that having that conversation in our state today with 85% of the use of fuel coming in there doesn't make any sense for us to be having that conversation. If we really were serious about making more you know, alternative energy, I mean, surely there's a better ways than that we can do besides that bill. So it is getting a lot of action. I will say that.
Representative, would it in any way preclude us from the franchise fee agreements that we currently have?
Yeah, I'm not going to say that because I don't, I don't know that. I I if I answer that, I could, I'm not 100% familiar. So
And because what you've just, what you've just shared on this bill and your understanding of this bill is a little bit different than what my understanding is. And so maybe we need to get our heads together offline about that. But that's a big concern for us. You know, if our franchise fee agreements could be in jeopardy, you know, as City Manager McQuillan has just articulated, that's about half of our annual spend on streets in the city of Clive. And so that's a big deal to us. So I, you know, I guess I would you know, appreciate, if you don't know now, I understand, but I would appreciate having more clarity on the actual effect, other than just the ongoing whittling away of home rule. It seems to be happening over the years, no matter who's in charge. Other than that, this more specifically for us, because that's how it can affect us. So I'd appreciate your help, understanding that better.
So your your question is about your contracts or your?
No, about our franchise fee agreements that we have with our public utilities that allow us to impose a franchise fee on energy usage that allows us to fund our roads in the city of Clive.
What I would add to that, Your Honor, is the one thing that I the the intent, Representative Judge, just you outline, I can understand that. The concern I have is the language in this bill is pretty broad in terms of prohibiting any ordinance, motion amendment, resolution that impedes or regulates natural gas. That's a much broader blanket than what you just described. And so that's, that's my concern is that there, could there be unintended consequences? Or could these utility companies take that further than what the original intent is of the legislation? That's our concern because to me, if it was more narrowly defined to the concern area, that's one thing. But this, the, I mean, the 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 language of the bill is a page barely. And it is pretty broad in terms of just pretty much saying cities can't do anything related to ordinances or around natural gas. And we have a whole code section in in this that on natural gas. So that's again, where my concern is.
Yeah, I'll clarify the finance, the the franchise fee. That to me, we've not discussed that in in any of the committees or that is topic has not come up. The reason why this bill is there is coming from the gas companies and the and what they're, what they're seeing in some other states is these communities that pop open and it's all a different form of energy. And they want to make sure that they have gas side. So I think it, I don't even know how much it really pertains to our state, quite frankly. You know what I mean? I I don't know it's a bill we really even need to be running. But we are. So I'll get some clarity on the franchise fee and how that affects that, because that is a, I'm not going to sit here online and say something I don't know. So and get a little bit more information on that. But what would your, I mean, as a city of Clive, I called you know, our city major here in Waukees, and it really didn't have an effect on them as he understood the bill as far as natural gas. So what what would be your wish as I'm your representative? So I have to make sure that I you know, make sure that I'm hearing your points. So how do you see the bill?
I, Your Honor, I'll offer a thought, at least for the mayor and council's consideration. I think when I see any piece of legislation that is prohibiting a city from doing from regulating or enforcing or adopting anything related to something we current regulate today, I would be, I would be, I think we should be opposed to that. Because again, it is, if it isn't, if there isn't something broken in the state, to your point where you just mentioned earlier, why are we running a bill that there isn't, there isn't an issue? And again, I worry about the unintended consequences of the state continuing to whittle away local government's authority on its, on things that happen related to development in their own communities. And so that's where I give pause. And I have to also trust my, our, our lobbyists of the Iowa League of Cities who provide advice on this. And they sent a legislative alert out this afternoon regarding this bill to every city in the state. So to me, that gives me a whole lot of pause on this legislation. And I'd be happy to share that information with you so you get an understanding of where their concerns are at.
Yeah, I I think when that bill was in committee, that the, if I'm remembering this right, because I always look at the declarations to who was who's for and against that I did not see the cities weighing in on that at this time. So it has passed out of committee and it's been for quite a while. So I don't know if there's some pause at the Capitol because I have not seen it come to the floor and for a vote. So there's still time to work on this and see where we're headed.
And we can touch, as the mayor alluded to, we can touch base offline.
Yeah, we don't appreciate, appreciate your thoughts on this, at least tonight. We can certainly follow up together offline and let's gain some more clarification and kind of see where things are at.
Yeah, I think that and how I said it is, it, you know, it's pretty much what he said. I mean, it's, it's it's, you know, saying the city cannot regulate where natural gas goes.
Well, much more to come on that one. You know, at this point, I'm going to ask councilors staff if they have other questions for Representative Judge. If not, we're going to ask him to stay for the rest of our meeting. We have, I think, five public hearings tonight. And I I'm joking, of course, but glad to have you with questions.
I always enjoy your meetings. So hope I didn't take up too much time.
No, always glad to have you with us. We appreciate your work and we'll look forward to kind of circling back on on this natural gas bill and and maybe even the bottle bill a little bit. I'd like to gain some of your perspective on that as we move forward, because I think there's a real gap there. And something needs to be done. So I, again, I appreciate your focus there. Council, last call for questions for Representative Judge. Kenan, thank you so much for your time. Great to see you and best to you and your family.
You bet. Thank you. And I'll just, who would you like me to follow up with on this? Do you want me to follow up with Matt or?
Oh, with Matt, if you would, and then I'll be close beside him.
All right, Matt, I'll reach out to you tomorrow.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Thanks, Representative.
Bye now.
Okay, we're going to move to consent items. Move by Eric, seconded by John. Any discussion? Seeing none in the council, please vote.
Anybody know if Susan is able to vote right now?
That is a good question. Matt, Pete?
I can see Susan unmuted herself. I don't know if we can hear you though, Susan.
Is it possible to put your vote in the chat?
Let me see if I can send her a message. One moment.
Last resort, we could mark in abstain.
That's going to be my recommendation in about 10 seconds here.
She text yes to me.
Okay.
Got it.
And that passes for to Sarah. Thank you very much. Okay, now we'll move to action items. And action item one is a public hearing regarding zoning ordinance amendment regarding signs. And there's a consideration of proposed ordinance number 1099. And Matthew, to be published appropriate public notice?
A public notice was published in the Des Moines Register on March 1, 2021.
Thank you, Matthew. Amanda?
It's good evening, everyone. So we talked about these, kind of the overall revisions we were planning to make pretty in-depth at your last meeting. So I'm going to skip the things we already talked about and just allow you to ask questions about those if those come up. And I'm going to just hit a few of the key areas that are still kind of open for discussion. So at the previous meeting, we had talked about the building mounted directional signs and what would be appropriate size. We've included two square feet in the ordinance. So let us know if you feel uncomfortable with that still. A lot of those signs are right around that size, foot and a half to two square feet. So that's pretty typical that you'd find on like the signs you could just order online or things of that nature. So we we went with the two square feet on that one. And then there are a few areas where there were two options presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission. One of those was on the product display and vending. Um, one of those was on the product display and vending. Um, we had gone out, staff went out in the field and found some of those really common, uh, outdoor product, display and vending items and took measurements of what the signs that were in place were. Uh, because there was conversation at the last meeting around, um, whether or not we should, should provide some limits on that. So if we did have a business that was, um, kind of a bad faith, um, overuse of that type of signage, uh, there would be some, some ramifications or, uh, actions that staff could take in the ordinance to, uh, remove that excessive signage. Um, so after being out in the field, we landed on 10 square feet to be a maximum for any individual sign, um, still including the language that those signs be incorporated into the display structure. Um, and then having a maximum of 75 square feet for any individual property of those signs. Um, so they could have multiple, uh, the people who are going to be the highest, most intense users of that are likely to be our gas station convenience stores. Um, it, it's fairly common that you would find a red box, wiper fluid, firewood and propane and ice all at one facility. It actually made it really easy for us to find these in the field because we just went to one come and go and they had everything except the ice dispenser. Um, so that's how we kind of came to those numbers. Uh, and those 10 square feet signs, um, are largely the, the posters you see on the propane cages. Um, those come out to right around between eight and 10 square feet, depending on the side of the cage it's on. Um, so that's kind of how we arrived at those numbers. Um, so planning and zoning commission did recommend adopting the language that limited the sign, individual sign sizes and total sign areas. The alternative language, um, that is presented for you guys, um, that staff had drafted was to not have any limit on that signage other than it being integrated into the display. Um, the other area, uh, to have you guys weigh in on is, uh, our conversation around temporary signs. Uh, so we did propose language there, um, largely just modifying those, that non-commercial speech temporary sign component, um, to allow those on fences or other existing structures closer than that five foot setback. Um, as you guys had expressed, that was a desire of yours. And then planning and zoning commission did recommend of our two options, um, a limit on the overall sign area and individual, um, sign sizes. Uh, we didn't do too much to tweak the sizes that were in the ordinance already without getting more feedback from you guys on that. Um, I did pull a 16 square foot maximum for those individual signs on residential properties. That is the number that West Des Moines uses as well. Um, so it made sense to be consistent with our neighbor if we were going to um, implement some of those restrictions. Uh, just hopefully to make it a little easier on some of the common users of those signs, which are like the political campaigns or other social campaigns that are out there. Um, the West Des Moines ordinance allows up to 64 square feet of sign area on those residential properties. Right now, uh, ours still has that 35 square foot language in there. Um, that's what it was before. And again, without more input from you guys on some of that specific, um, we're really okay with whatever number you would like, uh, to use if you do want to put that in there. Uh, the planning zoning commission was split on if they felt that that was too restrictive or too generous on the total sign area and the individual sign sizes. Um, so they recommended to take it through with the 16 square foot individual and 35 square foot maximum on residential properties. Um, there's not really a lot that's being changed, um, on the commercial property side of this. So I'm not talking about them much, but of course you can. Um, the alternative language that staff, um, presents there for the temporary signs, uh, basically just removes the, um, the area of restrictions entirely. So you would still have those setbacks, um, but allowing it on fences. Um, and the, the types of signs, so yard sign banner, those kinds of restrictions. But otherwise you could have as many as you wanted, as big as you wanted, um, is another option you guys could pursue. Um, one other area, uh, that had come up during the University Avenue corridor meeting um, was a, one of the recommendations from Confluence uh, that was mentioned during one of your last meetings was to look at interstate signage. Um, so we had reached out to them, Jill did, and got, um, clarification from, uh, Chris Shires on that. Um, and he indicated that that comment was really specific to West Des Moines, not Clive. Um, a lot of the West Des Moines regulations are PUD based or other agreement based. Um, so they're more, uh, restrictive and are not consistent. Um, he said he would take a look at our ordinance and see if he thought anything should be changed with that. Um, and he did not send us any recommendations for changes for interstate signage. Um, so I just wanted to follow up on that. Uh, I think Susan was on that meeting and since she's having trouble talking, I thought that might be a question she would have. Um, so that was a lot of information for you guys. So with that, um, tonight, we'd like the direction from you on which language you would like to do for the product display and vending, and then what you would like to see ultimately on that temporary sign language. Um, and then of course, uh, the public hearing component of the meeting.
Council questions for Amanda.
Amanda, this is, uh, Councilman Klein. What, what was the ordinance that we had regarding signs on individual properties before we made the adjustments?
Um, the pre-two thousand eighteen requirement for, um, for the temporary signs?
Correct.
Um, I would have to dig in on the specifics of that. Um, I do know we were able at that time to call out different sign types. So we were able to say specifically political signs have these requirements. Um, ru- real estate signs have these requirements. We can't do that anymore. Um, so that ordinance predates my time of doing any of the development review stuff. But I could bring back those specific numbers unless Doug happens to remember them offhand um, for you guys at the next meeting. So you could compare because we can continue to, to discuss that square foot number.
I'd like to see that comparison.
Other questions or thoughts for Amanda?
But man, I, I would need Amanda to kind of just recap what, like those areas she's looking for direction on tonight. You know, um, if, if she's going to give that, I mean, I'm ready to move the ordinance, but I think she's looking for more than that. If I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, you've got options, right? So Amanda, yeah, go ahead and recap those if you would.
Yep. Um, so I can do them one at a time. So you guys can discuss if that, um, would be helpful. So the first is on the product display and vending. Um, the two options that were presented is one just simply says signage associated with that outdoor product display and vending has to be integrated into the display structure. Um, so basically we can't have just paper signs taped around flying all over the place with the wind. Um, the second option, um, is to, thank you, Matt, um, is to apply, uh, the 10 square feet on any individual sign and the 75 square foot max, um, on any individual property of those sign types.
And Amanda, just let me clarify, P and Z recommended option two. Is that correct?
Yes, they did.
I'm comfortable with option two.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with it as well.
Okay.
I as well. And this is the first reading. So, you know, we can have another shot at it if Weaver gets back or.
Yes, and that is the language that we included in the draft that came to you. Um, but since it had been a topic of discussion at the last meeting, I just wanted to bring that back that there were two language options if you didn't like the limitation.
Okay, what's next?
Okay, um, the second one is on the temporary signs. I guess the first question really to distill it down is, um, do you want a size limit on the amount of square footage people can have on those non-commercial temporary signs? For either residential or commercial properties or both? Or do you not want to apply any size limits on those and just rely on, um, the setback in sign types? To be the only restrictions.
I'm comfortable with option one. Uh, was that not the one P and Z recommended as well?
They did recommend that one, yes.
I think we ought to have a limitation. So I'm good with option one.
Yeah, really the limitation is really the 16 square feet sign. That's, those are the barn signs, right? That's.
Yeah, those would be the larger ones, yes.
Yeah, um, I, I don't know that we need anything bigger than that on a residential property, but, um, yeah, with John, we've got to have some, some limitation and, and option A is, well, A under option one, A, uh, is presented here seems to be a reasonable approach. Eric, your thoughts or Mike, Susan?
So for political signs, what, what would the limit be on the, the number of two by threes or whatever the standard signs would be?
Um, so like if it's a two by three, it'd be about six square foot each. Um, so you'd be able to have five of those to get to 30 square feet. Your max would be 35 that you'd be allowed. Or you could have one big sign with, um, a couple of small ones as well, two or three small ones.
You have a four by eight. You can have one four by eight, right?
You could on a commercial property under this, but you would not be able to have a four by eight on a residential since that would be 32 square feet. And the cap would be at 16 on residential if you wanted to have a cap on it.
Thought I saw 35 square feet. Where did I see that on here?
That's the maximum total. So someone couldn't take, um, 12, 16 square foot signs and line their entire, uh, frontage of their property on the road. They would be limited to, if you wanted the 16 square foot signs, you would be able to have two of those. Cause then you'd be at 32 square feet.
So the four by eight signs, okay, that's, that's the barn sign.
Okay.
Right? That's, that's what I'm talking about. That's not included here in A.
Correct. You would not be able to have that with this language in a residential neighborhood.
And West Des Moines does not allow that?
Correct. Um, they are written at the 16 square feet on residential property. They let you to, they allow you to have, um, up to 64 square feet total. But on residential, uh, none of the signs individually should exceed 16 square feet.
So wouldn't it make sense that, you know, some of these max, uh, we, we're consistent with these? So how do, how do we get to 16 square feet? So no individual sides exceed that. How do you come up with that figure?
You could do those half sub-barn signs, right? Where I think, I don't know, you know, I mean, I'm, I'm just picking because I don't know, uh, if Eric, if you had them or whatever. But those four by fours, right? Um, would get you that if I'm not mistaken. So the half of the barn sign, the full barn sign would be that, uh, 32, but, um, yeah, I, I think you have to have a limit. I don't know what the limit is, um, but I think you have to have a limit. I agree with John. I'm not sure, you know, if it's a barn sign. And, and, and the problem is, is by house, right? A barn sign in my yard would look goofy. Um, but at another property, it wouldn't look so goofy.
I guess I have a couple of questions. One is how we came up with that 16 feet, uh, square feet per sign. And Michael, I agree with you. You know, if you've got, if you've got a big lot or a, a fence or something for a barn side, I think it is on the individual. I'm not sure we need to be quite so restrictive on, on, on that. I'm a little concerned with that.
Yeah. So to address that question, the 16 square feet is just the same number West Des Moines uses. So they're our largest neighbor. So I just picked them. If we were wanting to allow more is an example. They allow the 16, um, to try to create some level of consistency within the West Metro. Um, that seemed a reasonable number to rely on. They do let you have more maximum sign area than what this is currently written at. Um, from a staff perspective, I don't think we have, um, a strong recommendation on the square footages you're going to use. We've had mixed, mixed input from planning and zoning. Um, they ultimately recommended this language, but it was kind of their middle ground where, um, everyone could live with 16 and 35, though they didn't really love it. Um, because again, some people think 16 is very large in your front yard or on your fence. Um, some people want to be able to have the 32 square foot barn signs in their front yard or on their fence. Um, so of course there is an option to just not have limits on that.
Well, I can assure you, there's a lot of barn signs in West Des Moines.
We know how Waikiki and Urbandale, uh, match up.
Um, so quite a few of our neighbors have not, uh, adjusted to the new, um, Supreme Court ruling from 2015. Uh, so I do have notes on that, but the remote connection kicked me off here. So let me see if I can get back into that real quick. Um, to see exactly which of our neighbors have not adjusted to that yet. Um, but for the most part, uh, they were still regulating specifically for political signs versus other types of signs, um, which would not stand up to a challenge at this point. If there were to be one. I think I'm almost back in here on the remote.
Here's agreement that there needs to be a limit. It seems like option one, A, we're gravitating toward that, but maybe we need, need a little more thought and a little more background on the individual sign of 16 square feet. You know, I'm of the opinion that we go bigger than that. I think a four by eight is fine, but anything bigger than that is, is would probably be too big. So we've got to have some limitation. Um, uh, but this is the first reading of this tonight, correct?
Correct. Yes.
So, so let's note this and let's move, let's move down through the rest of them if we would.
McCoy, that's your cue, I think.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, sir. I gotta get my glasses on though. Move that, uh,
Wait, wait, wait.
I'm sorry, move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Move by Michael to close the public hearing, seconded by John. Further discussion? And before we do, is there anybody here to speak on this item? Uh, if so, uh, please raise your hand, uh, in the chat and let Pete know so he can get you connected.
Again, folks, the way to do that is to hit star six if you're on the phone or to use the raise hand icon that's on the participant tab of your Zoom screen. Your honor, I do not see any hands going up.
Okay, so moving second to close public hearing. Well, counsel, please vote. That passes four to zero. Now McCoy.
Councilman McCoy, I believe we're having a hard time hearing your audio.
Wait, now good.
There you go.
There you go.
Try this second time. Move that, uh, ordinance number one, zero, nine, nine. Uh, having been considered by the council, be voted on for passage prior to its final adoption.
Second.
Uh, moved by Michael, seconded by John. Further discussion? Seeing none of the council, please vote. And that first reading passes four to zero. Uh, good discussion here, uh, on this topic. I appreciate everybody weighing in. Um, and, uh, we can continue to whittle this down as we move forward. So thank you for that. Okay, we'll move to action item number two, uh, which is our second public hearing of the evening. Uh, this is to consider amending provisions of Title 10 Building Regulations of the City of Clive regarding building, electrical, plumbing, energy conservation, mechanical, fuel, gas and existing building codes. And Ryan, you're going to take us through that.
Yes.
Well, hold on, Ma- uh, Matthew, did we publish appropriate public notice?
Yes, your honor, we did, uh, March 2nd, two thousand twenty-one in the Des Moines Register.
Thank you, Matthew. Now, Ryan.
Mayor Council, thank you for your time tonight. Um, I want to give you a brief kind of update where we're heading with, uh, the codes or where we're planning to head with the, the building codes and trade codes as we move into, uh, 2021, 2022, uh, construction seasons here. Um, this year of COVID has been, um, an interesting year for us, uh, through the construction side of things. Still needing to get in and inspect some of the properties. Um, it's also been a good year of collaboration for, um, not only staff here, but also, um, amongst our neighboring cities to try and create balance and figure out what codes we can be, um, the same on and what codes may to try and create balance and figure out what codes we can be um, the same on and what codes maybe don't work amongst some of the various jurisdictions. So we've taken quite a bit of time to collaborate with our neighbors, uh, whether it be through the, the MIC group meetings or the CICC, which is the Central Iowa Code Consortium. Um, we've taken quite a bit of time to kind of move through um, some of the various uh, code sections and adoptions. So I feel good about this um, code adoption this year. Uh, the city of Clive is, has made great strides um, within. Um, spent a lot of time over with Fire Marshal Garcia as well. Um, moving through fire codes and how they re- relate to our building codes and going through and collaborating on that as well. So that's been uh, very positive for us here as well. I'm going to share my screen here and just take you through some of the. Can everybody see my screen?
Yeah.
Okay. Why update the codes? Um, my PowerPoint here, my slideshow here. Basically, I'm going to just take you through a few slides. Um, we'd get new materials that come out on an annual basis. Uh, so the codes are, are actually um, looking at those materials, making sure they're structurally sound, durable, going to last uh, for a long time and, and safe. Some of the new materials that looks at, but it also looks at some of the old materials. Yes, this um, straw bale construction has made its way into the code. It's an appendix section of the code of which we and the metro cities around the community will not be adopting um, for our jurisdictions. But I find it interesting that straw bales made it into the international code. Um, response to natural and man-made disasters, as you can see from some of the pictures, th- those are just some of the examples. Uh, the derecho we've had here, um, it'll be interesting to see what the code cycles do with that. Um, something kind of new here to Iowa. So it'd be interesting to see if our specific zone area um, will embrace any of the um, findings or the inspections or anything that we saw and perhaps make more stringent modifications to the codes in the near future. And again, you know, the codes are there um, basically for the protection of, of our public uh, uh, e- either business or a, a residence within our community. Um, the first group of codes I want to talk about is, is there one and two family dwellings and townhomes? This is the IRC or the International Residential Code. I'm going to just touch base on two or three different areas within this um, code. That way you get kind of a sense of, of some of the progress, maybe the codes have made. And uh, I'll just briefly talk about them to keep this moving along. Uh, the first one is uh, exterior walls. We adopted or made a modification to amend uh, the IRC to uh, coordinate with our current zoning regulation that was adopted. The, the general regulation that allows smaller accessory structure, or excuse me, accessory buildings to be right up next to a dwelling. You know, some of these smaller plastic type structures, it's very hard to get a fire rating applied to these types of structures. So we have relaxed a little bit with regards to fire ratings, which um, in the past, we were more stringent than the international code on this anyway. So we've kind of relaxed a little bit on some of these accessory buildings and the fire resistant construction. When you're on the same lot, so you've got a lot owned by a property owner, they want to build their own garage or shed. They're able to put that a little bit, little bit closer than what we've allowed in the past and not have to do fire rated construction. We still um, upheld the 302.1 table one and two of the code book that talks about property line separation of these accessory buildings. We upheld that, so um, we're in, in uh, um, swing with our neighbors and how they regulate that as well. Uh, townhomes, there's a provision in the new IRC that talks about the allowance to build two one-hour walls versus one two-hour wall. So the party wall is a separation wall in a townhome. It's a shared wall. The old code only recognized one two-hour wall. It was very difficult to build this. Uh, specifically if somebody wanted to do some kind of plumbing fixture on that wall. A single wall would not allow a plumbing fixture or a heat run or um, return air duct to go up through that single wall. We have allowed two one-hour walls to be constructed through an amendment process. But now the IRC does allow two one-hour walls to be constructed. So it's kind of neat to see that we've been doing something for a while now in our, in our metro area. And now it's being recognized by the international code. So now builders like this lot, it's more friendly. They can put sinks, vanities, um, kitchens, uh, pretty much anywhere now in a townhouse and not be restricted. Uh, the next section talks about fire um, smoke alarms, and it also talks about CO2 alarms. These provisions of the code are recognizing wireless devices. Wireless devices are becoming a, a new thing, which I think is paramount. Um, for saving lives within households, specifically sleeping areas. Where you get these smoke detectors or CO detectors that are talking to one another. So what you have is one detector, maybe in the basement senses furnaces on fire or something's not right down there. It's going to alert the other detectors. The code before spoke to, we have to have a hardwired connection to make that connection, that interconnection between detectors. The code now recognizes the wireless. So you can imagine remodels and other things, you know, some of the older houses that didn't have the interconnection requirements. Probably won't be this year, but in the upcoming years, there may be a requirement that if you do a remodel, you may, we may want to look into your uh, interconnection of smoke detectors or CO detectors at that time. But wireless detectors are going to give us that flexibility to do so in the near future. And uh, Fire Marshal uh, uh, Garcia and myself think this is paramount and uh, we'll be focused on this and then in the upcoming years and how we can apply this on not just new construction, but possibly remodels and, and additions as well.
But Ryan, I, I, I like that idea and all, but it's only as good as technology, right? So the power's out, everything, whatever happens, it's wireless. How did, they obviously have battery backup, but how do they still talk to each other? Is it?
Yep.
It works?
The interesting thing, um, so the code allows us to start right now on enforcing this on more than just new construction. We've um, Fire Marshal uh, Garcia and myself have uh, we're not really ready. We don't feel the market's quite ready yet because there are some kinks and some things that they need to figure out. I will say the advancement of some of the battery requirements in these detectors now. Um, Michael, they're putting in uh, 10-year lithium batteries that are warranted for 10 years. Um, these lithium batteries are sealed type batteries, which is paramount as well for our rental inspection program where we get tenants who take out the batteries and use the batteries in their um, whatever flashlight or whatever. Um, so when you have that, a sealed battery, that's a, you know, these wireless uh, detectors, they also have battery powered wireless detectors. So these 10-year lithium batteries are powering these things and power outages to allow them to talk to one another for up to 10 years, which is pretty impressive. And there's of course UL listings that have to go with the detectors as well. So there's some stringent requirements on some of the new detectors that are coming. So uh, w- we're not quite there yet. I agree with you, Michael. It's a little bit off on the technology, I think, yet. So we're gonna, we're gonna recognize the wireless. Uh, folks may want to have those installed. New construction's going to get all wired detectors still because they have that option.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, we wouldn't allow somebody to come in and, and build a new house and just put wireless in. In fact, um, some of these folks who want to do the Nest type, I think, which are wireless, they would put two detectors in that house, one that's wired in. And if they really want the Nest, they can add it, but we just recognize the wired in type that are interconnected through a, a building wire. So right now it's, again, I think it's a little bit, um, the technology maybe isn't quite there yet. And some of the new UL requirements for these detectors, it's interesting. They're trying to make them smart detectors where they um, they can, they can smell the difference between an actual fire and, and somebody burning food. So it's, it's interesting. It's going to be a interesting development on the smoke detectors and CO, CO detectors. So.
I need to get one of those that detect my food cooking. Yeah.
Uh, we're moving into the international building code now, which is basically I, you know, where I was um, was the IRC. That, that was um, basically your single family and your townhomes. Now we're moving to anything other than that. So businesses, um, schools, uh, anything other than single family dwellings and townhouses. So this, this picture shows a um, live work unit, which falls under the IBC. It's not recognized in the IRC. So some of the changes we and some of the other communities made around here is to, to recognize that, hey, we've got home occupations out there that maybe shouldn't be regulated under the IBC. The IBC talks about, you know, you gotta have exit signs inside your house if you're following the IBC. You gotta have uh, travel corridors. You gotta have fire protection in areas. You gotta have sprinkler systems because it's a sleeping unit. So we've recognized that perhaps um, live work units, there's a spot for them in our IRC as well. So what we've done is we've added some amendments to the IBC to allow anything that has less than 20% of your, your house as business use to be recognized as an IRC type building. And it can be built and, and utilized for the IRC. So just your typical smoke detectors and you know, one 36-inch um, exit, which is typically your front door. That's all that would be required out of a typical home occupancy that we would see. Home business occup- occupancy that you'd see here in, in Clive. Next one is um, storm shelters. Storm shelters have made their way into the code back in 2015. Um, the city of Clive punted on this. Back in 2015, we were only requiring uh, new construction buildings to have, have a look at the storm shelter provisions. Basically, if you've got a school, it's a new school. Um, you're doing an addition on the school. We have now adopted some provisions to require storm shelters to be constructed at that school. Uh, the CICC uh, subcommittee uh, created a stakeholders group, which included all the metro school personnel around the, the metro area. They were part of the stakeholders group and, and they sat at the table and had a voice in, in these rules and regulations that we're um, going to talk about here. So Clive being unique, where we've got Waukees schools and we've got West Des Moines schools within, we wanted to make sure that, you know, a, a school being built in Clive was going to be regulated the same as it would be within its own city, Waukees or West Des Moines. So the stakeholders group and the, and the subcommittee put together a, a list of different code items for this. And it was a recommendation that went through the CICC of which we are also adopting. The, the group decided on removing some of, it was chapter six and seven of ICC 500, which ICC 500 regula- is the regulation for storm shelters. They removed six, chapter six and seven, which were a fire rating that requirement that would be added to this. And then it was also talking about needing to have restrooms and, and backup electrical and other things within these uh, types of facilities. The, to keep some of the costs down of, of building these storm shelters. A lot of people wanted to utilize some of the larger spaces like their gyms or their auditoriums. If it was a new school, they would um, certainly make these more durable to withstand some of the 250 mile an hour winds plus that are recorded with a tornado. Uh, but we recognize that having to add restrooms in those and perhaps some fire rating uh, two-hour firewalls and things around this specific uh, gym or auditorium could get very expensive for the districts. So we've recognized, removed those areas of the ICC 500 requirements. So Waukees, West Des Moines, and Clive, Urbandale, Ankeny, all of us have adopted the same provisions that were recommended by the CICC, which is going to require storm shelters on new schools and additions. Now additions are going to fall under the existing building code. Uh, typically those provisions under that are going to just require if it's an addition and the addition's not large enough to handle all of the students, student body and faculty and staff, everybody who's in that building. At a minimum, it's got to cover storm shelter for the new part or the new addition. That would be the minimum. So it's not like these folks who want to build another music room on the backside of their, their school. It's not like they would have to triple this thing in size to create enough storm shelter space for every single student in that school. As written through the, the IBC, it would. But we've made some modifications because it made sense in our community and, and the school district communities as well. So. Next one, this is a picture of the PA, uh, PHS in the Walnut Hills. If you notice on this diagram, there's a pedestrian walkway that links two of these buildings. This is the new building that was constructed across the street here from the city hall. It's the nursing home type facility that's attached to Walnut Creek. Um, kind of the, the I think they're apartments, apartments over there. But anyway, this pedestrian park um, tunnel or, or uh, kind of almost like a skywalk between the two. As you note here, there's a property line that goes right down that. The 2015 code would recognize this property line and would require fire rating at that property line. Now this is an interesting dynamic. These two buildings are, are principally owned amongst um, or umbrellaed under kind of the same company, so to speak, with different um, LLCs or entities. So they're the same facility. I guess different facilities, but owned kind of by the same group. The code now recognizes buildings like this and would not require the fire protection elements to be located right on that property line. Des Moines has been doing this for a long time before it actually made it into the code with their skywalk system. You don't see a lot of uh, two-hour walls in the middle of these skywalks, you know, right along the property line. Um, they've been utilizing what made it into the IBC now for this, this kind of party wall section. There are some regulations on it, like you cannot uh, exceed a few square footage numbers. If you do, then you've got to put the fire protection at that point. We actually, when this was built across the pedestrian um, walkway between the two buildings was, was constructed. We utilized some of Des Moines' language to allow them to not require a a two-hour firewall right at this property line. Part of that is they have to have easements and agreements that are recorded from both sides. So firefighters are allowed to access both sides and fight the fire. And, and basically there's just kind of a common agreement that we're going to take care of this together type mentality. This is an interesting section of the code with some of the intruder type things that have been going on with some of the school districts. The, the IBC has recognized some of the different products that are being thrown out there. They're um, to be able to lock, you know, the doors of a classroom in the case or in the event an intruder is within the school. A device like this, this may have been made in a shop class somewhere, just some rebar that was bent and put around. The, the code recognizes that, yes, we need to keep these kids safe, but we also need to recognize that um, we've got to allow fire rescue, emergency staff to be able to get into these classrooms. So the, the key ingredient here is somebody who has appropriate credentials, whether it be a, a swipe card, a key card access or a master key that could go into the cylinder. You've got to be able to get in this door from both directions. This type of device right here, that's wrapped around that doorknob. If something's going in, on inside that classroom and the police or fire need to get in there, they're not going to get in there. So the code has recognized some of these products that are being sold on TV or even on the, on the internet. They've recognized some of these, these products are not safe and they've um, They've recognized some of these, these products are not safe and they've, um, put in some new codes that basically set some standards and regulations on what type of device would be allowed for locking classrooms. And then I've got two last slides here. Um, we're getting into the trade codes now. This one's kinda interesting. The dryer box on the left, you can, can kinda see this opening is oval shaped. You may have this in your house right now. This is no longer allowed. It was oval shaped like this to allow it to fit in a three and a half inch stud cavity. What they're finding out is that if somebody needs to put some kind of a cleaning device up inside that duct, the cleaning devices are typically round with brushes on the ends. It doesn't do a thorough job of cleaning that. And in some cases, the cleaning device won't even make it through that pipe because it's not a four inch round like the one on your right. So the code now recognizes that we need to keep these dryer ducts cleaned, lint free, and the proper way to do that is not to restrict the pipe or fold the pipe, um, just to get it inside a wall. So what we're gonna be seeing here now on some of these, um, mainly single family residents, they're gonna have either a two by six wall there, or they're gonna have to fur out the wall in order to get their four inch duct. Now, the minimum requirement for a dryer is a four inch pipe that goes up that. So you can see what they've been doing before. They've been using a four inch pipe and they're smashing it between the drywall and it makes that, makes that duct kinda oblong and, puts a lot of stress on the joints and other things which can lead to fires. So that's one area of the trade codes. Second one is a, is a big one. We've had quite a few fires, not only, um, and there's been a few in Clive, but not only in the metro, but worldwide with this, uh, CSST type piping. This code cycle, we are, um, requiring that any type of CSS, CSST piping have an arc resistant jacket. So the old yellow style piping that you may have in your home now is no longer allowed because if it's not installed properly, it could arc across a piece of metal during a lightning strike or what have you and start a fire. We've had a few that, uh, Garcia and Roe and myself have, have gone in and investigated. I think there was one or two perhaps last year. But anyway, the, the metro area, they started out wanting to ban all CSST piping. That didn't go over well with the manufacturers here. So what we've done is we've changed to an arc resistant type. That's the minimum that we would allow on a CSST piping install. And what it is, is the key identifier here is, is it's a black wrap on it and it's gotta have the AR, AR stamped on it. And basically it's a, it's a shield that goes around that, that is more durable and it, it disperses a lightning strike and, and pulls the energy through that pipe to, to the bonding and grounding appropriately instead of jumping across and arcing like you would see on some of the old stuff. So this would be the standard if the codes make it through adoption here, this, this type of pipe. Um, that ends my slideshow here. So I would be open to any questions you may have. This was just a, a tidbit of all the different codes that we've explored. I do wanna remind you that some of the codes are state mandated codes, so we don't really have an option of when and what we get to adopt. We can be more stringent than state code, however, some, um, in most, y- you can never be less stringent than what the state adopts. And, and those codes are the plumbing codes, the electrical code, the energy code and the international mechanical code. So I, I'd open it up to any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ryan. Uh, council questions for Ryan? That's a lot of material there.
That is, that is a lot. Um, I, I, I have a question that I'm hoping this might be just the best place tonight and I apologize for everybody, but you know, when it comes to the building codes, I think, uh, the professor can speak on this issue as well, uh, of, you know, some of these investment groups coming in and buying, uh, houses and turning them into, you know, every single room being turned into a individual rental unit. And how, one, I just don't know how that happens with some of the codes you just went through. I'm not sure how I could build a house, but, let alone these, these houses. I just had that almost happen. And in the real estate world today, they're bidding, you know, 20, $30,000 over the, the listed price. My neighbor just sold their house with $20,000 over their listed price. And one of the groups that just missed it by about $8,000 was a group that was going to put sev- seven bedrooms in that place. Uh, I think what my neighbor said best was, um, he would have never done the deal because he knew his neighbor would hunt him down and he's, I don't know if he's talking about me or not, Mayor, but he's probably pretty close to being right on that. Yeah, what are we doing about that, right? And how can that h- h- happen at all? And what do we do to stop that from happening? And, and am I right? I mean, I think there is one over, um,
Yeah, we have a couple. We have a couple. I believe there's one o- over on the 80th Street.
Yeah.
We have a couple. We've been having some internal discussions amongst staff. Uh, I think we've got a decent idea of how we're gonna approach this. That'll definitely be at future meetings, but we all agree. I mean, we're all in the same, on the same team here. I mean, these, these types of facilities don't belong in a residential neighborhood where the tenants don't know one another and they're living in this house together. Um, there, there's a lot of concern there, definitely.
Yeah, there's a, that's insane. Not just the, the trouble I know we've had on 80th, uh, with law enforcement being there. But I can't imagine a fire, uh, happening and, and a crew coming in there and not understanding, you know, which room is, is locked and what's a bedroom and what's not. And we've, we've got to, and so I'm glad you say it's coming. I hope it's coming very soon. I hope the council, the mayor are open to some very swift changes. Because though, sorry professor, I've heard about it on 80th Street, when it's in your backyard and about to come, I mean, I believe we should have shut it down before too. But I do think we should shut this thing down and the ability to do it, um, and swing back and grab the two that are out there. Because it's just, that is very unsafe. You wanna buy an apartment complex, buy an apartment complex or a duplex or something like that that's made for it. So I think we, as a group, need to take some swift action on that and.
There's, yeah, there's multiple, multiple ways to go about, um, regulation on those. Um, we've, we've thrown quite a few onto our, our table here and I, I think amongst staff, we're gonna, we've got some good ideas and certainly we'll be bringing those to the council here in, in upcoming meetings. Um, the building code, I will be, I will be working through some of that as well. The building code's been enough right now. In fact, we've got a couple of codes that we'll be working on that didn't make this round, you know, swimming pool and, uh, electrical update codes and some other things that didn't make this round. This, this round of codes, there's, there's quite a, quite a bit of stuff going, happening. So it's, it's coming, Mike.
Okay.
Your honor, just to that point, council member replied his question. That actually is scheduled to come to your, at your next meeting on the discussion related to mental occupancy and, uh, kind of the legal framework that we now have to work in in the state of Iowa, but that is scheduled for your next meeting in March.
Good. Okay, that's very good. Uh, council, are there other questions for Ryan on, on this before we close the public hearing? Hearing none, I'd take a motion.
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Um, it's moved by Mike, seconded by John to close the public hearing. Before we do, is there anybody here to speak on this item? Uh, if so, please raise your hand in the chat and, uh, have Pete connect you with us.
Mayor, I do not see any hands going up.
Seeing none, will the council please vote? Passes four to zero to close the public hearing.
I move that ordinance number 1100, having considered by the council, be voted on for passage prior to its final.
Second.
Moved by Mike, seconded by John. Further discussion? Seeing none, will the council please vote? And that passes four to zero, the first reading. Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move to public hearing number three, and this is regarding the 2021 arterial PCC pavement rehabilitation project. Matthew, did it be post-appropriate public notice?
Yes, your honor, this one was published February 24th, 2021 in the Des Moines Register.
Thank you, Matthew. Uh, Jim, walk us through it.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, lettings were held last week for two patching projects to be completed this year. Uh, the first for your consideration tonight is the arterial PCC rehab project. As you may recall, the majority of the streets included here were part of an arterial project that we attempted to bid twice last year. On the streets included and shown on the maps in your packet are sections of university, 128th, 123rd, 114th, Forest and 100th. Uh, one specific project note, because of the high traffic volumes on these streets, uh, work on this project is required to be completed overnight between the hours of 8:00 PM and 6:00 AM. At least one lane of traffic will be maintained, so no full closures will be in place overnight. Two bids were received, both from firms we've worked with in the past. And based on these bids, staff would recommend awarding the base bid plus alternate A amount of $716,180 to the concrete company. Be happy to answer any questions.
Ryan, just wanna double check, and I'm sure this is on the mind of the council, but, but you know, we're, we've been very successful at conducting work overnight, uh, on various projects and residential areas. Just remind us and reassure us that all the appropriate, um, uh, stopgaps are in place and communications with our residences, uh, above and beyond what it should be.
Sure, once we get a schedule, uh, from the contractor, um, you know, we'll be mapping out the areas on this, you know. Not all of these areas are immediately adjacent to residential, um, but certainly there are some that, that do touch on those areas. So we'll, um, be reaching out via mail and social media to get everyone informed of, of when we'll be there. Um, you know, the one tool, other tool is, uh, the website doing, um, more often several updates when we're in a specific area.
Okay. Council, other questions for Jim?
I'm with you, Mr. Mayor. And, and Jim has done a fantastic job. It was one of my regular questions every time we did these, but well, he's done a great job on smoothing that out with, um, businesses and residents. And so it's, it's, it's great.
Yeah, very much agree. Uh, super important for us. Others? Before we close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second. Uh, it's moved by John, seconded by Eric to close the public hearing. Uh, before we do, is there anyone here to speak on this item? If so, please, uh, raise your hand in the chat and Pete will connect you with us.
Mayor, I do not see any hands going up.
Seeing none, will the council please vote? Passes four to zero to close.
Move the resolution approving plans and specs.
Again. Moved by John, seconded by Eric. Further discussion? Seeing none, will the council please vote? Passes four to zero.
Move to receive the bids.
Second. Moved by John, seconded by Eric. Further discussion? Seeing none, will the council please vote? That passes four to zero.
Move the resolution worth contract to the low bidder, concrete contracting company in the amount of 716,180.
Moved by John, seconded by Eric. Further discussion? Seeing none, will the council please vote? And that passes four to zero. Thanks, everyone. Okay, we'll move to action item number four, public hearing number four on our agenda, uh, regarding the 2021 PCC pavement rehabilitation project. And Matthew, did it be post-appropriate public notice?
Published February 24th, 2021 in the Des Moines Register.
Thank you, Matthew. Jim, take it away.
Thanks, Mayor. A second, uh, PCC rehab project was also let last Thursday. Project includes patching on Alice's Road, 156th Street, south of Hickman and on Summit Drive between 149th and 152nd Streets. We did work with the city of Waukees on this one to include approximately 200 square yards of patching on their side of Alice's Road, south of Meredith. So we'll be seeking reimbursement from them and about, uh, approximately $25,000 for that work. Three bids were received. That tabulation is also included in your packet. TK Concrete again submitted the low bid. We've worked with them on several similar projects in the last five years. Staff would recommend awards TK in the amount of $520,795. And again, I'd be happy to any, answer any questions on this project.
Questions, council for Jim?
Move to close.
Close the public hearing. Moved by John, seconded by Eric to close the public hearing. Before we do, is there anybody here to speak on this item? If so, raise your hand in the chat and Pete will connect you to us.
Mayor, I do not see any hands going up.
Seeing none, will the council please vote? And that passes four to zero to close the public hearing.
Move the resolution approving plans and specs. Second.
Moved by Eric, seconded by John. Further discussion? Seeing none, will the council please vote? That passes four to zero.
Move the receipt of bids. Second.
Moved by Eric, seconded by John. Further discussion? Seeing none, will the council please vote? That passes four to zero.
And move the resolution worth the contract to TK Concrete for $520,795. Second.
Moved by Eric, seconded by John. Further discussion? Seeing none, will the council please vote? And that passes four to zero. Thank you. Okay, public hearing number five, regarding Northwest 128th and US Highway 6, disposition of certain right-of-way property and granting temporary construction easements to the state of Iowa. Matthew, did we publish appropriate public notice?
Yes, your honor, there was two publications for this, uh, for, one for each piece of the property and they were published February 24th, 2021 in the Des Moines Register.
Thank you, sir. Jim, we're getting our money's worth tonight.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, switching gears a little bit to a right-of-way topic, uh, Snyder and Associates has recently completed a design project for the Iowa DOT for the widening of Hickman Road from 3580 interchange west through the 128th Street intersection. The proposed improvements require right-of-way acquisition from several properties along the corridor. Two of those parcels are owned by the city of Clive. The first parcel four, which is shown on your screen, is in the southwest corner of Hickman and 128th Street. The proposed intersection improvements here, including dual lifts in all directions, require more land from all four quadrants of the intersection. The DOT has made an offer to purchase a strip of- The DOT has made an offer to purchase a strip of additional right-of-way adjacent to Hickman Road along with an associated temporary construction easement for a total of $14,730 on this parcel. The second parcel identified as 12A cleans up an underlying fee interest held by the City of Clive on a parcel of right-of-way south of Stu Hansen Dodge. There are several parcels with similar interests in the project area that are being cleaned up at this time to provide the DOT clear title to the US six right-of-way. With this tag, staff would recommend the disposition of these parcels to the DOT. And with that, I'd be happy to, again, answer any questions you may have.
Questions? Counsel for Jim before we close the public hearing? Hearing none, I take.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second. Moved by Michael, seconded by John to close the public hearing. Before we do, is there anybody here to speak on this item? If so, please raise your hand in the chat. And people connect you with us.
There, I do not see any hands going up.
Seeing none, will the council please vote? And it passes four to zero to close the public hearing.
Move the resolution for the disposition of certain right-of-way to the state of Iowa.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Michael, seconded by John. Further discussion?
Thought that was gonna die.
Seeing none, will the council please vote? And that passes four to zero. Thank you so much, Jim. Okay, item number six. This is not a public hearing. Well, it kind of is, but it's not. 2021A general obligation corporate purpose bonds and 2021B general obligation urban renewal public safety facility bonds. Joyce, walk us through this one.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. So this step in our process of our spring borrowing is to set the date for the sale of the bonds, which will be the March 25th, right, that morning, prior to our meeting that night. The 2021A bonds are for the capital projects borrowing for the upcoming year, and the 2021B would be the third and final phase of borrowing for the public safety facility. We had our credit call last week, and I think it went very well. Hope to hear positive things next week when we get the results on Wednesday, but so we've got that to look forward to. And then also this resolution will also authorize the use of the preliminary official statement with all the information that is used to send out to the people bidding on our bonds. So happy to answer any questions you may have.
Counsel questions for Joyce.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Smoothed by John, seconded by Michael. Further discussion? Seeing none, will the council please vote? And that passes four to zero. Thank you so much, Joyce. And before we move on.
Thank you.
Let's, let's talk about something that's really important, and that's your birthday. That's, I understand, birthday today, and would like to thank you for that.
Thank you.
Put you on the spot.
Thank you so much.
Now the time you want me to sing, Mayor, or does that later?
That would be later.
Okay, yes.
Appreciate you stepping forward on that, Mike.
Communication shop gives that a hard pass, Councilman.
Very good. Okay, item seven then is a resolution approving a 2080 agreement with the City of Urbandale regarding aquatic season passes. And Richard, take us through that if you would please.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we have a proposed 20 agreement with the City of Urbandale. The proposed length of it is two years because they recently closed, are permanently closed, their indoor pool that they've had for about the last 45 years. Felt like that the maintenance costs and issues just really couldn't sustain it anymore, and the pandemic really just forced the decision for the City of Urbandale. But they wanted to find a way to provide additional aquatic opportunities for the residents, and so they reached out to us and proposed allowing all Urbandale residents to get Clive resident rates for aquatic season passes. And then the City of Urbandale would pay the difference to the City of Clive. We don't know exactly how much additional revenue we might bring in. It's essentially revenue neutral for us. The maintenance costs or the administrative time to get this figured out and get the invoice to the City of Urbandale is pretty very limited, so we feel like it's a, it's a good opportunity for us to potentially engage more Urbandale residents in the Clive Aquatic Center that maybe this brings more people in and gives us the opportunity to continue to grow the base of people that come and use this facility. Based on Urbandale's estimates, it could be anywhere from 15,000 to 35,000 that they may pay us for this. But we just don't know based on how many people are going to show up this year after the pandemic. So it's really a wait and see, but we believe it's a good opportunity for us to, to have this partnership with them and engage more people in our facility.
Well, Richard, thank you. Yeah, and I understand we've got to try to get our arms around numbers and everything we do, but this appears to be a no-brainer. We want to help our friends and neighbors, and hopefully this will be of help to them and their residents. I would just offer that commentary. Counsel questions for Richard?
I, I have one comment I'd like to make, and Richard, you're right, although this is revenue neutral. I think you hit the, the nail on the head. The more exposure we can give citizens of Urbandale to the Clive Aquatic Center, the more usage that it, that it will, it will, it will get, but the broader picture, the long-term picture, is perhaps citizens of Urbandale won't approve a bond for their own aquatic center, and they'll continue to utilize a Clive center, which has a larger representation. So I think this is a great opportunity for the type of regionalism, but it's also a great opportunity to show the citizens of Urbandale that we have a great aquatic center that they can use, and perhaps they don't need their own.
Indeed. Other thoughts or comments, counsel?
I'm supportive of it, Mayor. I would have even been supportive of it to forego the extra cost back to Urbandale. But this is a bonus, right? I just think in the time of a point like this, that, you know, we could have foregone that, that they offered it up, so it'll help us with maintenance.
Sounds like a good arrangement. Is that then a motion from you to move this forward?
Certainly was.
Resolution.
So moved by Michael, seconded by Eric to move the resolution. Further discussion? Seeing none, will the council please vote?
I do not have a vote from Eric yet. There we go.
Item passes four to zero. Thanks, everyone. Richard, thanks for your work on, on that, and counsel for your support. I think it's a great thing to collaborate with our friends and neighbors. So good stuff. Okay, we're going to move to reports now, and Pete, I'm going to start with you down on your end of the dais.
Thank you, Your Honor. To start tonight, we had a very good meeting today with the Clive Chamber of Commerce. The mayor made a strong presentation about the state of the city, picking up on a number of themes that he has already featured in his utility newsletters in January, February, and March, and also bringing in some content from the Economic Development Newsletter. The chamber did record that presentation, and we will be able to share that on our YouTube channel or whatever other appropriate platforms. Now, obviously, we'll make sure that we do this in a way where the chamber is comfortable with it as well. The actual presentation materials we'll share on cityofclive.com so that folks can go through it at their own pace as well. Second, we have two really exciting opportunities to lift up some residents in Clive and some businesses in Clive. First, we have the annual Citizen of the Year nomination process with the Clive Lions. Earlier this evening on our social media, on Facebook, the city's Facebook page, I shared the information on how you can nominate somebody and get in touch with the Lions to get the appropriate nominating materials. Nominations are due by March 31st, so if you have somebody in mind, we've got about half the month to go to get that name submitted to the Lions. Second, the chamber is looking for votes for the Business of the Year and the three finalists, and I don't know how anybody's going to choose, 515, Mercy One, and Five Boroughs Bagels, which are three places where, you know, everybody likes to go. So tough vote this year, only one winner. Clive is a winner for having all of those businesses doing so well in our community. Couple stories to note in the press. One, we had a nice summary story of the Green Belt Goat Program, probably the most comprehensive story we've had on the program thus far in the Register. Matt will be sharing that if you haven't already seen it in the Friday email. And then tomorrow, we'll also be talking with the Register reporter to discuss progress on the Public Safety Center. Finally, and what is probably the most important piece of news of the day, with the recent passage of the federal stimulus bill. It appears that there will be a very large amount of money coming to the City of Clive. Now, we are still working to confirm the official amount and also have clarity on how those dollars can be used. But earlier today in a report from Axios Des Moines, the number looks like it could be as large as 2.39 million coming to the city. So earlier this evening, I watched or reached out specifically to Congresswoman Axney's office to look for a place where we could get an official report on that number and also start to get clarity on how the dollars can be used. I was not able to watch the president's remarks this evening, but I'll be reviewing those, and Matt and I and other colleagues will continue to get the information together so that the council is in a position to make good decisions on utilizing whatever the number is of resources that ultimately make their way to the city.
Pete, thank you. A lot of great information. Counsel questions for Pete? Well, Pete, thank you. And I'll just say on the, the chamber presentation today, I, as Pete knows this, but I ended with the goats, so naturally it was, it was a hit, so I'm glad to be able to share that. So thanks, Pete. All right, we're gonna, being Ted's gone, we're gonna move down to Eric.
No reports tonight, Your Honor. I will be gone out of country for the next week for spring break with my family, so wish everyone well here.
Well, safe travels to you. Hope you enjoy. Appreciate that. Thank you. John, we'll come to you. Professor, are you with us?
Yes. Just a couple of things. I'd ask that you keep former council member Ronnie Beglatter in your thoughts. She just lost her husband Marty yesterday. Some of you may have known both of them, but I wanted to share that news.
Thank you for sharing that. Did not know that, so we'll take appropriate steps there. Thank you, John.
The other item relates to our legislators being with us at the beginning of the meeting. The Metro Advisory Council met with metro legislators earlier this week, talking about legislation of interest to the metro. And just underscore, there are a number of bills that are of interest or concern, and so I just want to remind everyone to, as was suggested at the beginning of the meeting when our legislators were here, be sure to reach out to them on these bills that are of interest to the City of Clive. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, John. Questions for John, anyone? Along that note, just before this meeting, we had our first annual meeting, the statewide mayors association, and totally focused on on legislation and with, with the league, of course, kind of stepping us through that. Very, very similar theme to what John just articulated, so if I could just second his suggestion, I certainly would, and good discussion for us with our legislators this evening. The other thing I would share with you is that we had our metro mayor's meeting last night. Ted Corrigan, CEO of Des Moines Water Works, was with us. He was our presenter. Ted always does a great job. He really talked about all of their priorities across the spectrum and, and then really kind of ended with the regionalization discussions. You know, Matt's up on this, but the, the discussions with the small group have been progressing very well, and that's good news. They are hopeful to have the next proposal, regional proposal to all of us entities by the end of this month. So let's cross our fingers there, but that's very, very encouraging that because it's a very complicated situation, so that they'll be able to come with a proposal hopefully that makes sense for all of us and especially for us. So excited to share that news with you. Susan, I'll pass to you.
Well, first of all, with the couple of recent meetings of the BRBA Board and Finance Committees, you will see an announcement tomorrow of the grant awards for the current portion, and we are continuing to try to basically get as much money out the door as we possibly can to recipients because we know they're really hurting right now. So it was kind of a balance as to what can we do? And what's it likely to look like next fall for the next payment, which is likely to be significantly reduced for them? But I expect that to be appreciated by everyone. And then thanks to Amanda for mentioning the meeting that was held with the Corridor Committee. I think, you know, as we move to go ahead and adopt our sign measures, we just need to realize that there are recommendations that have come from the professionals working with both Clive and West Des Moines, and they think we should be having larger signs available to face along the interstate. So we may be in a position to consider some adjustments along the way, just to kind of conform with that, but that's it.
Thank you, Susan. Questions, counsel for Susan? Okay, Michael, we'll move to you.
I have nothing additional, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Madam, counsel?
Nothing. Thank you, Your Honor.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay, Matt, we'll come down to you.
Thanks, Your Honor. Just a more, a few updates, more related to some future dates that are coming up. First off, I wanted to check in with everybody regarding wanting to do, speaking of the public safety facility, wanting to do an on-the-ground tour of that, progress of that facility with all of you, looking at April 15th. It'll get us past some of the muck and mud we're going to have out there for a number of weeks with the rain coming this weekend, and also get some paving down and get some walls up, so you will be able to start to see the definition of inside the building. So talking with the construction management team and Angie, we thought about that middle April time period would be good based on the construction schedule. So I know I'd heard back from Ted, and there was an MPO meeting, I think, that night, so we were maybe looking at 5:30 to give him some time to get from that MPO meeting, but wanted to check in with you all to see if that, April 15th, again, you can get back with me after the meeting as well. It's the Thursday in between our two, in between our council meetings in April, so please let me know on that.
Matt, I'm good, just for the record.
You're good?
Yep.
What kind of time are you looking at for that?
5:30. We'll get, we'll do it after the construction crews have left, and then I think then Ted needs to buy a little time to get from MPO, I think, that night, so. Also, on Monday, we'll have the University Corridor Joint Workshop Monday night with the City of West Des Moines, Mayor and Council as well. That'll be a Teams meeting, and you should have all that information. What I will send tomorrow in my weekly update, my Friday email, is a memo that the community development staff have put together just to kind of give you some background and some key discussion points to kind of have in your mind for that discussion on Monday night. I think they're also going to be sending your mind for that discussion on Monday night. I think they're also going to be sending an updated presentation. Chris Shires from Confluence, I believe, is going to be sending something out tomorrow as well. And if I see that he didn't get it out to the whole mayor and council, I'll be sure to forward that. But that'll be prepped for Monday night for that discussion, which a lot to lot to talk about there. Also strategic planning dates. Thank you for everyone who got back to me on that. Those are now locked down for August, and you should see, receive some meeting notices from me on that for those dates. In talking with the mayor here earlier this week, we've, based on where kind of the COVID nineteen case trends are at and vaccination levels, we are looking at reopening city lobbies in the library two weeks from tomorrow. So Friday, March twenty-sixth, give us a little bit of breathing room beyond spring break. As we know, a lot of folks are traveling, so just wanted to do that. But then we are going to be reopening with some limitations, like to start off, similar to what we did last July with about ten at a time in the library with a thirty-minute kind of time limit, and then we'll build from there as hopefully this pandemic starts to wane as vaccinations ramp up. With that, though, we will maintain virtual meetings here going forward, March and likely into April, as I don't see necessarily the indoor gathering limitations from the CDC changing until more vaccinations have occurred. So that's where we're at on COVID at the moment. Last thing I wanted to mention is earlier this week, I participated in the WRA Finance Committee, and I know it's been many years in the in the making, but the Finance Committee has approved a recommendation that will go to the Policy Committee and Councilmember McCoy and that group for a long-term agreement, a ten-year agreement with Shell, North American, North America for buying of the biogas for from that is produced by the WRF, by the reclamation facility, and net revenue. So this is after debt service and fees and maintenance is paid for. It would be about two-point-four million dollars per year clear that the WRA would generate from that. And I will also be a part of a committee that will be evaluating that excess revenue and determining what's an equitable way for the WRA to apply that to the membership, whether it's operating or debt or other ways to to utilize that revenue. And it's just, again, I know it's been many years in the making, but I think this this council should be very proud of that operation down there and some of the innovative things that they're doing, really turning it into a business and certain elements, whether it's phosphorus recovery, which is another element that they're working on as well. And then this biogas is going to be a game changer for the long-term operation of that facility for the region. So wanted to mention that, Your Honor. That's all I have.
Matt, that's that's really good news. So thank you for sharing that. And please keep us regularly posted on that, and I know Mike will as well. But those are the ends that we work towards with some of these long, long-term collaborations that we have. Matt, thank you. Council, questions for Matt? Okay, hearing none. Matthew, any other correspondence that we need to be aware of?
I have nothing else to add.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, anything else for the good of the order? Well, hearing none, I'm gonna adjourn us at eight thirteen and wish all of you a great weekend. It's gonna be a little wet, but have a great one nonetheless. And thanks, everybody. Be safe.